All right, first item on the agenda today. Any questions, gentlemen?
This is kind of writing a past wrong. The district was designated in nineteen ninety-three. I was still in high school. I don't think it was. When it was designated, y'all saw, some of you probably remember seeing eighteen oh two Madison Avenue that we did individually some years ago when a group of us purchased the property because the city had been in litigation with the owner over the condition for about ten years. And he finally played every card he had to play. So we got that designated before we sold the property. He had convinced everyone on his side of the street to challenge the petition to designate nineteen ninety-three apartment to save the city. And a decision was made and just carved back.
Locked him out.
Locked it out. So at this point, all the owners have consented. The two individuals who were kind of leading the charge on this took a house that had been a problem property for a long time, that hadn't been coached for, had some really questionable activity. And they opened it up, cleaned it up, and said, "Look, this is how we're going to protect ourselves to prevent this type of thing from happening." Everybody signed on to it. So that's where we are. And the neighborhood had two forums in the last month to try to designate the remaining nine hundred properties in the neighborhood.
Any more questions? Thank you, it's great. Yeah, I'll get it. Please, you get a couple of those. Start the agenda, Dr. P. Um, and the two?
I put it on Mary, county commissioner hearing. This property was, I think it's in a windbreak, and it was, there was a survey that was done on it, and it was under contract for sale, and it was discovered that it was, it was changed laws on the right of way. So the buyer, the buyer backed out, and was trying to get a license to have that on there so that it won't be an issue.
Yes, I want association. That's good.
It's been on there since it was built on.
Yeah. That'd be fine, okay, I'm good with that. All right, I have number three, T V D. Just a renewal of their franchise.
It is a renewal, and it's been, I don't know if it was in here, I saw it earlier, but it's been through I T and Martin Mavilla, and Alveda, and we've been working on it. They're all one of the inspired last month.
Charles, do you, do they have a representative?
Yeah, they do.
Oh, all right, sir. Those are wise.
We're trying.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Tyler, I just wondered, I get called time to time, we have a lot of boxes, you know, in front of our properties, and we have a lot of them that the box has been taken, run over, or whatever, and some of the neighbors in the different areas, and I did get calls, and if they could get it replaced, they never really ever get this box. I wonder if there's some, some person that I can tell them to call maybe, Tyler?
Call me. Ken has my number, Lou has my number, the mayor's got my number, I'll have to go out and leave some cards for y'all. Any, I'm y'all's resource with anything. I mean, if, if, if y'all need me, feel free to reach out to me on anything, and we'll get it taken care of.
Anyone who's held your box over anybody else's?
Um, it depends. I mean, obviously, you got Wow here, you got eighteen feet as well, so it, it, it just depends. We can easily get somebody out and look at it and determine if this can do, or do villagers something.
I appreciate it, thank you so much.
I just wanted to say thanks to y'all's staff, too. I deal with municipalities across the state, and dealing with Ken and Lou on all of this franchise, it's been extremely helpful and very useful, so thanks for that.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you. Okay, number five.
Number four is a show call hearing on a little bit of tavern we've heard of in the program. And number six will be the actual, as we've been talking about, uh, number six is setting up the public hearing for December fifth, and the same for number seven, is setting up the public hearing for December fifth.
All right. You're good. See you in there in half hour. Okay, I have a number eight and nine, those are both different.
And they also have substitute?
Seven people, they have substitute. What's the deal on substitute?
We didn't get the police report, we didn't get the police report until after the agendas was done, so the, the substitute has everything.
Do we have to sub two down fours, is this just information?
That's just information.
Okay.
The resolution is to send.
Same, same. Any problems with these two? And alcohol to the business.
The guy selling the food, the baby boy, the stater.
Good, good. Okay, number ten, museum board.
Good morning, Herb.
Mr. Jackson, just lay you.
Yes.
You had her, you got, you got, okay. Places in Rogers County with Susan Price. Can you get board? Nope. What happened?
I've, Charles, I've got three more I'll pass out, just different appointments that have expired.
Yeah, you have one.
And I'll pass that out.
There's another museum. I see you have one.
I have one.
You got one, you need to submit.
Yeah.
You got, you got stuff with you now?
Yes.
What do you got, you're gonna just do it? I'll do it then.
Is it a museum board meeting?
I was just asking what a appointment was.
You got, you got really?
Yeah, I've got like a warrant, too, a board appointment, but I, I got your ass off.
Well, you want me to tell you?
Yeah, Tyler, what you got?
For Mr. Ballinger, we have Chris Conway being reappointed to the retirement for Mr. Ballinger, Karen Campbell reappointed to my family historic preservation.
He's reappointed.
And for Mr. Larkin, reappointing Karen Campbell to the museum board.
Okay, we'll do those in order after, as we always do.
And for Mr. Vale, for Mr. Vale, we have, he's appointing Kerry Powell to the museum board.
Okay, we'll do that then, okay. Which, which there. Okay, we got all the demolitions, we got, uh... Ten demolitions today, we had ten more houses now, Thomas. Get them down. Get them down, I said we haven't tear them down. Keep on tearing them down, I said we got to get them down. Okay, number fifteen, we've been out of this particular, other places, so that's nothing. All right.
Charlie, I got one real quick.
All right.
Maybe we'll take a look at that. Yeah, maybe one copy of it.
I'll read this one quick, Mike. Kim, you need to...
Kim needs a copy. It's coming today.
This is something we got, I think we got a problem here, Glenn. I think we got a legal issue we got to deal with as far as how the, that money is accumulated. Kim, you know about that?
I need Barry, maybe.
Barry?
Here, take a look at that, tell us what you think.
You were involved in Pike Road money, and how we got the Kent Hilly money separated, collected and separated and paid. And at lawsuit, I believe there was a, a recent...
There is a tax district, is that what you're talking about?
Yes. That, we collect the money.
We collect the money, but we got the settlement agreement where we turn over the money to them.
What's the rebuttal on that? If we don't...
Well, we violated the settlement agreement court order.
Court order.
We can put it into an escrow account, though.
No, no, I mean, that's how we do it.
Now, what is, what is Montgomery, it's that?
This was, this was a, a settlement agreement in federal court between two parties.
State court.
State court, between two parties. We actually tried to make a settlement through the legislature, get the legislature to deem for the, 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 Charlie was at the table when we did all this, but we could not get it through the legislature. So we went to the federal court, I'm sorry, the state court, with a proposal for a settlement agreement. That was agreed to by the parties and adopted by the court. So it's court order that we'd be violating, and you don't want to go violate the court order.
It was part of all the D annexations that we did, all that was in that settlement agreement and, and the court.
Plus this...
The settlement agreement of the court, I mean, with its order and all, so it's, it's from two thousand and ten.
And we got the Pike Road annexation, D annexation, settlement.
Your attorney helped me.
Still hanging?
Well, what's the way to, to get what Glenn's trying to get? Because I think at the end of the day, we all agree with it. Pike Road got a billion and some dollars that they weren't due, and they're not giving it back to the public school system in Montgomery. Well, they are. They are.
How?
No, they're not.
Today? Let's don't, let's don't get into the legal issues again.
But how?
They will get it back.
With mayor's been two years.
No, they're not.
If, if, if your check would have come to my bank account, and I took it to spend it, I'd be locked up in jail. That's what they do.
Then the Montgomery Public School System needs to sue the State Board of Education.
But we also have a vested interest in it.
That's why we intervened in the, in the lawsuit, that Attorney Bell is requisite for...
Which is gonna move on.
But I'm just saying, we've intervened for those issues that you've just talked about. It would be part and parcel of any conversation that happens relative to these lawsuits.
Well, let me just ask you something. Let me ask you something. Pike Road has money that belongs to Montgomery School System, there's no doubt about it.
Okay.
Then Montgomery School System doesn't have to go to federal court, or go to court. Montgomery Schools are, are, are just doing attachment on the city. So the city, don't y'all hold, don't y'all hold those taxes? Who holds those taxes?
Nobody.
Well, how do y'all get the taxes?
We collect, we collect.
Y'all collect for Pike Road?
No.
Yeah.
Okay. You're sure of it, then? I mean, you're not assured, but, but, but the law strictly, strictly says that the depositary, that you can, that, 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 Montgomery School System can go and sure it. I, see, I don't understand if the God is willing on the lawsuit. Y'all intervened on the city, and you didn't ask the city council about one thing about whether, they, whether you want our blessing, Mayor. And, and, and I don't see how you could do that on your own. Can I get one amen from some of our city council? Listen, don't sit back and, and pretend like you don't know.
Well, I didn't even know that we intervened.
Yes, they intervened. And one thing that the city said was they had a vested interest in the, the students in Montgomery. And I agree. But if you have such a vested interest, why haven't anybody tried to get that money back before now? That is a way to get it back, I'm telling you, is, is, is code out about six, that's four, that's five. Look it up. The city, the city council, I mean, the, 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 the county commissioner got a right to do it, the governor got, has a right to do it, and the district attorney, and not one of those entities has even care. And I don't want to make a racial thing, but I'm gonna tell you, if, if, if Montgomery County had gotten that money from Pike Road, there'd be holy hell going on, I'm telling you. But you know, everybody sits around, we say we got a vested interest, a vested interest, but what have we done to do it?
We intervened.
Yeah, Mayor, you intervened when we filed lawsuits, and, and that will be knocked out anyway, because you ain't got no interest in us. That lawsuit has nothing to do with the intervention. That lawsuit has something to do that we filed against Mr. Stennis, Stennis, and Mr., what that, that guy trying to be Colonel, Dr. Elders, about transferring, improperly transferring employees of this, of the state, of, of the Montgomery Public School System. It has nothing to do with the constitutionality of the, of the intervention, we, we never said that. So I don't know how you as the city would be interested in keeping somebody who's been denied their constitutional rights from receiving it, because there was no notice. And I wish y'all would read the lawsuit. And there again, I, I, I think this board, I, I think we are advocating, advocating, and advocating our duties to let the city go and intervene in a lawsuit without asking us. Because once you intervene in a lawsuit, you're subject to be, once you make yourself a party, you're subject to be sued. Because if you file a frivolous lawsuit, you know somebody is gonna ask for sanctions. And so what I'm saying is that, you know, and, and, and I want you to know, it's, it's nothing to do with you, I'm talking about the position of Mayor. And I, I know your heart is there, I believe your heart is there. And I don't say I'm not trying to please you, but you just can't unilaterally enter the city into a lawsuit without conferring with us.
Well, ask my counsel.
Ask your counsel.
Under Act six eighteen, we've filed lawsuits, and we've settled lawsuits, and we don't tell the council when we settle stuff and when we originate stuff.
And then we're putting black folk in the back of the buses, like, do we fit your thigh, but it doesn't mean it was right. It simply means that six eighteen doesn't give the mayor any authority to intervene, and we don't have, we don't have power because we sit here as the city council. We only have the power that the enabling statute gives us. And if it doesn't, it simply sets off the duty. And I saw nothing at six eighteen that says that the mayor has a right to intervene on behalf of the city.
Well, he's got a right to protect the...
No, he got a right to defend, but how you gonna enter a lawsuit and subject the, the city to monetary damages maybe, if you don't even, you don't even care enough to give us a professional courtesy to even let us know, let alone about, about us doing a resolution.
Then you got a defense, Mayor, well...
Who has a defense? We didn't sue you all.
No, I'm just saying, if you're the councilman or somebody tries to name you, then you say, "I didn't know anything about it."
No, Mayor, listen, you're a good lawyer, you've gone up against each other. You didn't pull that on me right there. You know better than that. You entered the city of Montgomery into a lawsuit. Come on, tell me where you get the authorities in that.
I, I promise you, we wouldn't have done it if we didn't think we had standing to do it. I mean, that was researched, and you may disagree on it, I mean, I, I say that you did.
Give me, give me, give me the statute that gives the mayor the unilateral power to enter into a lawsuit without conferring with counsel.
You're talking about two different things, aren't you? Standing is one thing, and the legal statutory right to do it is another.
Well, I think standing, if they don't have statutory right to do it, they don't have no standing. But, you know, I don't think you got standing.
But if we do not have standing, the judge will not allow that to happen.
And he hasn't, and he hasn't ruled on it, so, in all essence, y'all made a motion, and the jury had a rule on it, so you are not in.
Correct.
So you, so, so you can... That's just, it's back to the question at hand. The person to file a lawsuit relative to one point four million dollars would first be the Board of Education, and second would be the county commission to do that.
You're right, the county commission would void the kitchen, I'd have authorities to do it.
But as part of the ongoing issue relative to the Pike Road, and eleven point three million dollars does include one point four million, which I personally think it should have been a separate issue, but that's not what they chose to do in the negotiations with the Georgia Washington state. So if we win that ever settled, the one point four million will in fact come back to the Montgomery Public School System.
Man, settle, they're not settling.
Well, the final approval has not been made.
But, but, but Mayor, hey, what y'all saying in your lawsuit, that you got a vested interest? Wouldn't you have a vested interest in ensuring that that money that was postmark, they use all these euphemistic terms, over allocated? Well, if it's over allocated, it could be under allocated, you know? But nobody, it's all...
If and when, if and when.
Nobody...
If and when we get to the table.
The mayor's been two years. Thank God we're standing in the right place. I, I, I know that, when it comes to getting these little poor kids, and, and, and Montgomery, nobody wants to hear, I'll shut my mouth. God, let me go to the, the center, please.
Why, why, why did we try to start a city school system if we're not interested in helping the kid? Why would we not get enough votes from this city council to allow us to go into an evaluation of a city's school system? So evidently, the city council, in its wisdom, doesn't want us to do that.
Yeah, but you know, we never talked to y'all about that either, man, and you know, and we were in the city council, we asked you about that, and then you said, I, I specifically remember, I said, "It seems to me like y'all trying to poke me," you know, from the country, I can't say all those big words y'all said, but I said, "Take over the school system." And y'all said, "Oh, no, 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 back up, no, no, no." Then I looked around, and I was, I was saying, "Got a vested interest in it." Nobody...
Trying to take over the school system, trying to create a school system, just like Pike Road created a school system. So what, at the end of the day, that's what we're trying to do.
Bottom line, this deal to me, we got too many other issues going on with Pike Road that, more money law than I used to discuss, is this is a school board issue, not a city issue.
Yeah, but the city jumped in, Mr....
We're in a lawsuit.
The city, city got a vested interest. So you can't have a vested interest in a lawsuit, and then we would talk about it and say we don't have...
I know these are a whole lot bigger than this.
There may be another way to do what Glenn's trying to do, but going and taking the money that was approved by the, the courts is not the way to do that. We would be held in contempt of court, and I'm not gonna go to jail over there.
But you won't be doing it, city council will be doing it.
No, I'm the chief...
You don't have to get it, we can vote on it, you don't have to get it out.
I like that.
Richard Sherman? It's approved. Since we were talking about having a vested interest, where the council had a vested interest in the school system here in Oz, there are several councilmen here that would like to fund that study out of our own discretionary funds.
Which study did you have?
The study that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we had set aside earlier.
Councilmen who are willing to give a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yes. We believe that something needs to be done about the school. Yes, we do.
Okay, what do they do? Seventy-five thousand, seventy-five dollars?
No, we have several, so...
Yeah, go to just...
Well, why don't they do it? Why don't everybody...
I was just bringing that up.
Yeah.
First, I've heard of it. I, I certainly...
We'll, we'll, we'll get with you.
Do it. And find out if your constituents think that, that it's approved.
I think all constituents agree, everybody will agree that something needs to be done about the school system, and all we're doing with this study is seeing what we can't, not there's not that it's something that's...
Sir, I know, I didn't...
We all agree that the direction of the current school system is not something that, that I think all constituents agree is unsatisfactory. And we need to do something about it.
As you can direct their six eighteen money to do that. And I got another thing about six eighteen money if you want to talk about it. We have got a situation now with, with, if you want to put an extra seventy thousand dollars in, I need six eighteen in the paving account, that'll give you an extra mile of paving in the districts. Chris Conway, from the other day, he was giving us next, they've got twenty-one miles of paving money available, the way that money's been allocated, so if you want to put seventy thousand dollars more of your money into the paving account, then they will get you an extra mile of paving in the districts.
And I've agreed to go for a hundred thousand.
I'm, I'm going seventy-five thousand.
Well, we only have the capacity to do about thirty, thirty-nine, thirty-two, something like that, so we appreciate it, appreciate it. That's true, we gotta get through it.
Have y'all targeted where those are? I know where those paving won't be, but have y'all targeted where it will be?
I'm worried about this. The city council has a proxy, anything that needs...
Can't you list the worst, please?
Well, I seen fifty thousand, take it out of mine, and I ain't not seen them paving over there in the district season, because I know seventeen thousand is what they're paying there, but we okay with that.
Well, Chris, beginning of this fiscal year...
Yeah, they're paying, yeah.
Okay.
Got anything you need to go, Fay?
Absolutely.
You see?
Yes, sir.
Are you all right for me, Chris?
Yes, sir.
I think we discussed this, if you have available, get the same amount, get paid. Just speak to us today in public knowledge for the council today. Susan Conlight would like to introduce her new replacement. Susan? Susan retiring after twenty years, twenty-five years, thirty years?
Forty.
Forty-two years? You got a statement, Susan, thank you for your service.
Yeah, thanks.
What Susan do is the manager. We will do something at the city council meeting tonight. There's also a reception in the mayor's conference room after the city council tonight. She's got, she's gonna give a night, or her, her, her board is gonna give us a nice party after the city council, and we'll have a few things to give her at the city council as well as, after.
Now you're good to hear, sir.
This is Amanda Miller, my replacement. Amanda has been studying, I would say, for the last two and a half weeks, and she has a notebook about that thick of books that I have taught for nine o'clock in the morning until six, every hour. And take her around and introduce her to a lot of people in the city. I asked for about ten minutes at a time, and we ended up staying over an hour in some cases, but it's probably nice. And Danny, thank you. So everyone is trying to see how Amanda can fit into their program, and I think she's gonna do a great job, and we're just really pleased. We had fifty-two applicants for the job.
Wow.
Fifty-two.
Before Amanda talks about herself, just to give you a brief background, this is a non-city employee. She is an employee of the Clean City Commission, the search committee of the Clean City Commission, went through the fifty jack catches and added down to three, did in fact make a selection. I was not consulted about Amanda, she was only one of the three. I didn't know, but I've been very impressed with it. Tell us a little bit about you.
Thank you. Well, I most recently have five years of nonprofit fundraising experience with the American Hands for Society and the muscular district extension. And I'm just excited to use that, that knowledge to be a part of just really getting in grade diversity, and, you know, doing my part to help keep our city clean.
Very good. You saw how good she is at fundraising, I'm gonna give her a check she hadn't even asked for.
I was gonna wait till later.
I mailed mine to you, you should have had it by then.
Yes, we did get it, thank you. Yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I would invite you to come up and help me. I see Steven here, here, Steven, you come follow up. Steven's been asked to come today, head up on your main site, and talk to us about what goes on, and I think Mr. Ballinger has questions, and we got to kind of let you answer the question first, I think, Steven.
Richard? You know, just recently, in mind, district, I had someone call, we had a complaint with the dog that was changed up most of the time, and the dog would bark constantly, and it didn't matter, it was two, three, and one, whatever. We've had the police out, I think Deputy Andrews out of your department had sent somebody originally out to check on the complaint. I think I talked to you, and then I called back, they couldn't find any kind of reports or anything. I talked to Deputy Davis about a week ago, he was supposed to send somebody out, and I still have to turn back to your group, so, and I have one of the people that is affecting here with us. We can't step to that next level until we have that report, our next level, we go to court. And we gotta have a report. So that's one of the things I'm looking for, is to make sure we don't have that breakdown in communication. And after three calls, with two people going out, including our police department, I'm looking for those reports.
Okay, so what is the address of where that happens? I, I remember we spoke, and when I spoke to the officer, they said there was a warning given, so I remember I informed you that they...
Would you please give him that address?
Five thirty-two Melanie Drive.
You know, let's take a second to give you my phone number, two, two, one, six, zero, six, four. And when you find that, and call me, I'll give you an email... And, uh, when you find that and call me, I'll give you an email address, and then we'll go.
Thank you so much.
Speaking, um, biggest dad of the year.
Yeah.
You know, each individual scenario, we're going to break down there. The biggest ongoing, uh, conversation that the mayor's always received is weekends. And somehow, it gets dropped on the weekends between a call and somebody, and they end up with our police department. And, uh, you know, we've turned all that over to you guys. Can you talk about what the procedure is on the weekends or holidays, uh, that, that we should have some confidence from the council and the mayor's standpoint, that, that these problems within our city on the weekends are gonna get handled?
Well, we do operate seven days a week, eight to six, so there's someone there every day. Now, major holidays, they're on call, uh, and the dispatchers, uh, for city and county are notified that who the on-call officer is, uh, on those answer the mercos. Uh, I'm not quite sure why we would have, I haven't, I haven't received any information saying that we're not answering calls. I mean, I've got a couple from Gail, uh, from your office, and, uh, just people feel like we're limited sometimes on what the law says of what we can. Uh, but, uh, I have not heard, um.
Could you staff on the weekends?
Every time, seven days a week. Yes, sir. The only thing is, uh, we're only on call on major holidays once listed in the animal control contract, uh, it's Christmas Day, New Year's Day, Thanksgiving Day, I think July fourth. Uh, and then if it's Memorial Day, there's always someone, uh, on, twenty-four hours. So the only thing is, like, within the city limits, if it's, uh, an after-hours call, there's someone on, uh, uh, our agreement is if they have a vicious dog, the officer shows up to lay their eyes on the dog, 'cause we don't have the knock-down lights, and then they will notify the officer, and they'll be around. I know that they're going out in the middle of the night just from the insect center coming in at one-thirty, two-thirty in the morning, three o'clock, so I know that they're going out. Uh, but, uh, I certainly wasn't aware of, uh, problems.
So at two o'clock in the morning, I got a vicious dog. What do I call? What number do I call?
If you call the shelter, it will roll over to the dispatcher, so you really only have to know what number.
If I call nine-one-one, what happens?
They will take the call and then call the, on the call dispatcher, or they'll actually send it on. Do you live in the city? Do you live? So they will send an officer out first, 'cause they're closer to the city than they would be, and then our officer would be around. So usually they'll just, they're asked to just kind of keep their eye on the dog, 'cause it's tough to spot a dog at night. We don't have the big lights and, you know. So they typically help us with that, and we've had great success with that.
Stephen, I know dogs are one issue, but we have wild animals around the city, and I think maybe overall you need to kind of, maybe talk about how you deal with it as a councilman. I, I know I call, have something I call, but it's, it's a special way to handle it.
Coyotes.
Coyotes, and foxes.
We faced coyotes, I guess since I can remember, it's been a challenge. Uh, you know, our thought is, we're not licensed trappers, you know, do we handle the culture, two, three hundred a year? We bring up all vector species are euthanized. If they're, uh, suspected of rabies, we do euthanize, take them to the state lab once recently. Uh, we took three foxes that were put, uh, put up in the, or picked up from the same general area. Uh, we received a call today about a fox and, um, Forest Hills, well, there's a coyote in Forest Hills and a fox on, what's the big church on?
Fraser.
Fraser.
Yeah.
Uh, responding to both of those. We're not, if you've ever dealt with a, a wild animal is wild, uh, but when they're, uh, suffering from distemper or rabies, they're a whole, it's a whole different lobby. Sometimes it's incredibly tough to, uh, use catch poles. Uh, years past, we had chemical capture, but the chemical that's used for that was taken from us by the vet board. Uh, so we're limited to, um, the chemicals that we're able to use. I mean, there are, it's case in xylotene, if you're fed minimum drugs. Problem with it is it takes fifteen or twenty minutes to not, uh, uh, to start having effect, and a coyote or a fox can cover a lot of ground in fifteen or twenty minutes. Uh, ketamine was the drug that we used to use and mix it with xylotene, so it had no street value. Uh, but due to, uh, someone in my position, I think in northern Alabama, was selling out the back door, the vet board just took it from everybody instead of, you know, just dealing with that amount of vision aids. Um, we've been looking at pet guns. Problem with those is you have to get, uh, closer to them, uh, and that's not always the easiest thing. Pretty successful with it. I mean, the, your primary vector species is gonna be raccoons, um, coyotes, and, uh, foxes are gonna be your main. Uh, flying squirrels are on the vector list as well. We actually had to treat one of our employees at the cost of fifteen thousand dollars for the rabies insurance. Um, and you would think if you got the rabies vaccine, you would, but you still have to go through the treatment even with the vaccine. Uh, so there's a lot of risk there for our team. Um, we do handle it, I believe, very efficiently, uh, but it's a struggle. Uh, we have the ability to put them down right away, but we don't have that capability. There's no firearms or anything like that. We're unable to put them down on the scene, so you have to try to catch them. So it's a struggle.
It is. You don't have, you don't have to take bills, so you don't have a legal bill.
Nope. Uh, well, that was, remember, that was a subject that gets off to, it came down to liability. I mean, the law does say we have the same powers as a deputy, uh, deputy sheriffs. Uh, given, our powers are given to us by the county commission. Uh, Sheriff Marshall was for us carrying, or for the deputies, carrying guns. Uh, the, uh, Sheriff Cunningham is not unless they're post-certified, and there's really no value to taking those officers or making them post-certified for the limited laws that they enforce. So we just, we're, we're at that point now with firearms, uh, but it was beneficial.
Do you have an A book for that?
We've tried them, but they're, uh, we've hired some that have left from different police departments. Uh, struggle is, um, they're used to dealing with people a whole lot different than the way we deal with them, um, so it, it really wasn't a good fit. They're used to policing people. We don't, we just try to educate and help people be better pet owners than, than force when we have to. It's just a different mindset.
Of course. Uh, one Saturday, and, uh, you say the hours, uh.
Eight to six.
Eight to six, so it's like maybe like eleven or right in the afternoon. There were two, uh, I guess bulldogs. Had my wife and child hemmed up in the house. Could come out. They were in our yard. And so she called the humane shelter. It just rang, and nobody answered. And so she ended up having to call the police, 'cause the police don't do it again. So they ended up just have to wait the dogs out. So what I'm saying is, nope, it was between hours, and nobody answered, and it just rained. So do you have something where, like, I got grass out, I can set fifteen different numbers. In other words, if nobody else was in a certain amount, it can roll over to other people to find somebody. So I mean, is that only works when somebody's just sitting there? Or what? I mean, do you all have like a service that, if you like in Tennessee, that at least rings your cell number? 'Cause what I'm saying is, when people are sitting there and they have a vicious dog, got them hemmed up in the house, somebody needs to pick up, and, you know, what, I, that's just one incident. I mean, there are other incidents, and I know you come today, probably have several people here, and we'll probably, um, try to have you come back down, and we do a more comprehensive analysis. But, uh, I'm just saying, personal experience, and mine is not upcoming, you know, whether they call and nobody answered.
Well, our phone systems won't, we're not doubting it. They should ring and ring. It goes right to a voicemail after a certain number rings, and it stays on that phone. We do have eight lines coming in, and, uh, by no means trying to offer an excuse, but when someone's talking about their pet or something, it's not a five-second conversation. And trying to cut it off is incredibly difficult, 'cause they just love you so much. Uh, so it's, it's a challenge to get off the phone sometimes, but it should never ring at right now. I can tell you, most recently, um, I did do some research, and Director Murphy helped me with this, is, uh, when you type in, um, animal control, the county website still has the two-four-one-two-nine-seven, which when we first took over, and we'll control that automatically rolled, rolled over to our number. Somehow that got taken off. Now that phone number, 'cause I call it, just rings and rings and rings and rings. Uh, not quite sure how that happens, but I have to, um, figure out who to get ahold of with the county to get them to take that off there, uh, when you Google search it, take it off their website.
Mm-hmm.
You got a bad phone number on the county website.
Well, if we have that hard, if we have the forward on, I think it's been taken care of, then it gets irrelevant. It should just roll right to us. That's how it was initially set up. But when I started getting a few phone calls about the phones are ringing and ringing, I called immediately check messages and return phone calls. By no means doubt of your situation, but, um, so hopefully we've got that rectified, 'cause if someone just by chance on their phone Googled it, it's not coming up Montgomery Humane Society. Now, if they go to the city's website, it does roll to us if you click on animal control. But after digging, it's the county, and unfortunately, it's the first line on the search engine.
Could be very easy to laugh.
Yeah. So if you do do animal control, but I think, I think it's fixed.
Did I get more questions? Thanks, Stephen. Appreciate it. Dorothy Allison wants to speak to us. It's Dorothy Allison.
It's me, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity for me to come forward, tell you a little bit about my program, this nonprofit, Hard Race Cafe. That's for high-risk youth and younger adults ages fourteen to twenty-one. And what we do will be, first of all, we partner with the DA's office and a couple of the social service agencies, and these are people who have current non-felony, nonviolent felonies. And we take them in. Our hope is to divert this negative behavior, challenge it into more positive conduct, and we have in curriculum two components that we use to train, um, in life skills and, um, social service skills. So we do that, and with the food service component, we give them an opportunity to work in our cafe. I'm sorry. I've been clearing my throat and it's catching up with me. Thank you so much. Thank you. So we, um, began operation of our cafe about four weeks ago, and this cafe has worked the operation. Um, we're new, so we do seek further funding for operations, but again, our youth will be able to, um, work for us as they are trained in the food service, uh, industry. If they like, they, they will receive certification, and if they like, this is a career type, um, that they can use, you know, for their careers. Again, they're fourteen to twenty-one, and so when they move school in line, we hope that we have help to develop them. And if they don't want to use food, food service as a career option, at least they have, um, something that challenges the behavior and allows some customer service skills. It, it allows discipline, and that's what we're using it for. And along with our other, um, social service items, such as personal development, goal-setting techniques, conflict resolution. Those are some of the items that we address in our nonprofit program. And like, we do not, um, offer our program to just any youth, so we do receive referrals. We partner with juvenile court as well, and, um, Department of Human Resources. Because we understand that these individuals have behavior that either has led them to criminal activities or there is a pattern and a propensity for that kind of behavior, and so that's why we exist.
What, what's your location?
Twenty-five, twenty-five East South Boulevard. We're located inside Church on the Row. And so we do collaborate our efforts as well. So I have, um, yes, I do. We do collaborate our efforts with, um, other incubators of Church on the Row. Having that available already. We have a commercial-sized kitchen equipped. We have a commercial kitchen by which, um, they'll be entering. We have a licensed chef to assist us in the food service training.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. We'll consider it, okay?
Do you have another, uh, request coming from the, uh, speaker? I want to do one for this type of scenario.
Yeah.
So that, okay. I like to, let me just take that.
Yep.
Well, let me just take a good time to do this. You know, we get, if you think back over the last year or two, we get a lot of these requests. All good programs, all doing great work, uh, but all we know is it's five-one-C-three, and it meets certain criteria. I have suggested to Charles that we could find a pot of money, pick a number, fifty thousand dollars, and house it over at Community Foundation. And when organizations like this come to us, we could then refer them to the Community Foundation, who either knows about them or can find out about them, and then make a recommendation back to whomever wants to make or to the council about the, and I don't wanna, you, I don't wanna say the legitimacy just with this, but there are some places that it's just about getting a compensation. And so Burton Upchurch, uh, is willing to take on that role, she's capable of taking that role, if we so desire to, rather than individually, you say, uh, I think that's a good program, I'm gonna give them five thousand dollars, if we could, we, the city council, could, could refer this person to them, who would take an application, they would do the investigation. That investigation would come back to the city council. Then you would have some additional knowledge and legitimacy of these organizations. Again, I don't speak about that just because I heard it. This is a perfect example. Uh, there are numbers of organizations in this building, uh, that's, that's on the East South Boulevard. There's several that have come, that have come to us to ask for stuff, and, uh, while we could go by there and look and things like that. I just think, uh, it's, it's protection of the city council, protection of city funds that are going to legitimate and, and needed use. And so that's what I'd like to at least put on the table, be y'all's consideration, because you're the ones that are gonna fund it from your respective accounts. I'll make, I'll make the money available outside of your accounts.
Will they, will they be the ones that have found the city?
No, you would.
Well, you know, what I would like to see, sometimes we can't get, is a lot of these problems increase. Some of them really legit have board of directors that have a budget and a plan, so that if I'm gonna go with two thousand or five thousand dollars, I, I know that it's not gonna go with salary base, that maybe it is gonna go out here for you or something else, veterans, whatever. But that's what, what I don't see sometimes, which is a quick brochure.
That is what the city, the county, Community Foundation would in fact do. It's almost like a united way, where they would go and find the additional information. And again, they would not make a decision, what they would do is recommend back to you that is legitimate, maybe a five thousand dollar, two thousand, one thousand dollar contribution, and you guys could divide it up among yourselves from your funds. Or we could approve it out of the fifty thousand or whatever that number is that we put over there.
So where would that money go, fifty? You, you?
I'll, I'll, I'll make it available through some contingency funds.
Well, in the opinion of you, don't talk to me.
Well, we may run out, and then we might ask the, the city council to put in five thousand of their contingency funds or something like seventeen. But we'll do the, we'll do the initial one. We'll do the initial one and say, twenty-five thousand, four, four, four.
That bear don't take it away from us.
Yeah. I mean, we've had that discussion, I think we're seeing the parts, right? I mean, we get, you know, fifty not-for-profits that are all about youth, or fifty that are about veterans, that, you know, if whether or not, and I know they all wanna be their own boss and their own thing, but it's like, we're giving dollars to each one of them, and as you said, whether or not some are legit, some aren't, I, I don't know. And I'm not saying, but, but it's like, if we, if they, we, they potted the money together under one guy, and everybody worked together, opposed to, you know, five dollars here, five dollars here. I mean, that's the other, I mean, 'cause every time we turn around, it's, I mean, there's about five different types of not-for-profits that sixty of them come from. Same guy. Just using this as an example, if we did this, what we do is to say, after they made their presentation, if you think, wanna be supportive, make your application to the Community Foundation. There is an application process, there is an investigatory process. That, that group would come back to the city council and say, yes, that's a worthy cause, and yes, here's four more, uh, four others that are doing this. Uh, I just think we're gonna get a better, more use of our money by having an individual organization that's got a lot of credibility, and it takes it out of really our hands, making the value judgment.
More than just a five-one-C.
So if y'all, if y'all are willing to vote, you're able to do that and represent. Now, there may be some that come to you that you just, we know, and you just say, hey, we'll dispense with that. You can fund it out of your discretionary funds, but, uh, if you so choose, and we say, okay, you go make the app, we're not gonna take the application. They go to Community Foundation, speak to Burton Upchurch or the, the Services Coordinator, they fill out an application, they gotta say who the board of directors are, they gotta give them budgets and those kinds of things to get for the legitimacy. 'Cause if you remember, about a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars, maybe a quarter of me, is given out by them every year through this vetting process. every year through this vetting process, that they make application to other not-for-profits.
Oh, you were right.
Yeah, but I, but I, but I, like I said, I wouldn't put in the first fifty thousand.
I know, I know, sir. Yeah. I actually don't talk on the vendors list, we have churches, and I don't wanna offend any churches now, please, I don't wanna sound like I'm sacrilegious, but, you know, if our churches ask, I don't mind using the funds that's five-one-C attached to the church, but what, give us some guidance on the churches, you know, like, I'm Baptist, all right, and you know, we take up three or four collections, but, but what is the legitimacy of us giving state funds to a church? I mean, I find somewhat a problem with it, am I, am I wrong?
It's normally.
But if I gave to a Muslim, if I gave something to the Muslim, everybody's saying I'm wrong, you see what I'm saying? And it's nothing that I hate, you know, I give my own money to the church, but I'm just wondering separation of churches to the state.
I would say it happens often, but there are churches that have programs for kids that we have support, some of them will come and talk to you guys, or, you know, have a basketball team they wanna take somewhere, and obviously do it often, but when you have a church, we try to have kind of a hard and fast rule, that there's gotta be an approved five-one-C three, churches don't have to be five-one-C three because of that separation of church and state, so.
So, if we wanna give something like a program, I think I want you to do a great thing with using that, I just don't, I just didn't know how to, so you have a problem with that?
I think it's a really good practice and a pure contribution to a religious organization not to do it. We've actually been sued three different occasions by groups because of churches state that do it.
But, but if they get a five-one, so there's one, if they got a five-one attached, that's gonna be okay.
Well, let me give you a, for instance, Value Cross, wonderful program, is a Christian school. Montgomery Christian School by Trinity is a Christian school. They've come to us and asked for support, we have not given that support to them directly because it is a Christian-based school. We can do it individually, as a, as a person, but not as an entity.
And that doesn't mean we, we don't, we hate religion or churches, it just says, you say.
Not at all.
Yeah, okay.
And we have, how many councils we got now, we give money, like two hundred?
I haven't counted.
It's a lot, it's a lot.
So, anyway, let's go, let's go here, we got more people wanna talk, and then we'll go, but that's a good suggestion, I think, like.
Should we ask the young lady to go to the community council, make an application for the program?
I think the next one's the same.
Are you going to formally set the program up before, like, a week or two, or has it been set up?
No, it's not just set up, but it can be done. I talked to her last week about you. They don't need the money today, anyway. I mean, that's what they do. They do the exact same process with this as they do every other organization.
The grant.
The grant, the making of projects.
Let's, let's go here, we got one, Pastor Torres, I'll speak to her, Pastor Torres.
He's on, you have any other material for him?
Okay, all right.
You got the problem?
Yes, sir. How do we? Yes, sir. Mayor, do you mind if I just comment briefly about the separation of churches to state and grants in five-one-C three?
Let's go.
You are absolutely correctly, churches should not receive any grants per se, because of First Amendment and the third article of the state constitution, but they need to set up a separate organization called the Community Development Corporation, not the religious, there's religious, mutual, and public benefit, but they need to set up an integrated auxiliary, just like the Catholic charity, not the Catholic church, or the Lutheran church, not the LLC, which is Lutheran social service, that's the one that receives grants. Our SEC has mandated that churches are automatically tax-exempt publication five-five-seven, page nine, ten, twenty-two, and twenty-eight. Five-one-C three means many things, also for religious purpose, but primarily the state or the federal government, because of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution, which says Congress shall not establish any law for the free exercise of religion of therefore. You cannot make any. Matter of fact, the state of Alabama just backed off November two thousand and eleven, you don't even have to incorporate into state because of the third article of the Constitution. But churches must set up a separate five-one-C three, in order to ascertain one hundred percent of the grants, the private sector primarily would not give to churches, because it's discrimination. If you have Baptists, I mean, you give it to Baptists, but public benefit needs to all. I just wanna get a little general clarity, I teach this throughout America for the last forty-five years, and we're trying to make sure that we have a separate five-one-C three, so we have a relationship with God, and the integrated auxiliary is the one that we need to have, that's what churches need to have, and you'll find in publication five-five-seven of Internal Revenue Service, page nine, page ten, page twenty-three, and page twenty-eight, and which clearly define that, and also the United States Constitution itself. I just wanna break your attention.
Is this group out there with you?
We see that, man.
Okay, I mean, nine, ten.
Thank you, thank you.
Come on, follow that.
Gentlemen, I'm not here to make a speech today, I'm just here to.
What you here for?
To let you know that my flagship event is approaching, and I'm just letting you know that I'm asking, I'm reminding you that we would like for you to support it like we have in the past. That's the Super Bowl event, which comes up in February, but there, thank you, but there's a lot of work that goes into preparing for it, and so that's why we're asking for funds early, so that we can get the work done and make it more effective this year than it has ever been. Now, what I wanna let you know is that the first year, one hundred and fifty participants showed up, grandfathers, fathers, and, and grandsons.
Well, this is to Mayor Paul's train, this is about.
No, no, it has C.C., C.C. on the back.
Oh, good, C.C. Oh, you got it right.
I just want you all to get the same information. All, all I'm saying is that the first year, one hundred and fifty grandfathers, fathers, and grandsons showed up. The second year, four hundred and fifty, we expect to double that, which is around nine hundred people to a thousand people, and we're asking for you all to make the contribution again, because it's more than bolding, it's about teaching a principle that's making a difference in the lives of young people. As I conclude, I had a wonderful experience on the first Wednesday of this month, which was just last week, being at a men's breakfast at Craig Memorial United Methodist Church, and there was a man in the room who knew me, but didn't recognize me.